All right. So. I am going to call the Tuesdays at number twelve twenty twenty three. Tom Water City Council work session to order. Welcome everyone. So with that, we will do. Roll call, I believe I have everyone here. Yes, I have everyone here, so we will dispense with that. So is there, I don't believe there's any changes to the agenda this evening, so we will get started with. Mike Matlock, who will go ahead and do the addressing food insecurity and access. So go ahead, Mike.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Let me try to share screen here. Okay, does that look like a slideshow?
Not yet.
Not yet. What what are you seeing?
I see I see the presentation with the sidebar with the.
Okay, then we're on the right track then. Okay.
I see things making me hungry, Mike.
Yeah, there's food on there.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know why it's still got the sidebar on, but we can still deal with that. So, good evening. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about the issue of food insecurity by council request. What I really don't intend to talk about, though, is the enforcement case on holding loop that kind of brought this issue back into the floor for us, not that it ever went away. That is still an active code enforcement case. We're still working with the warrants on that. And it is an administrative action, and it probably wouldn't be appropriate for me to delve very far into details of an individual code enforcement case and a public forum like this. So I'm going to try to avoid that, but really tackle the larger issue and some recommendations that staff has and how we can how we can help with this issue. So. There we go. So nationally, as of twenty twenty one, there is about ten point two percent of the population in the U.S. as a whole that experienced food insecurity at some point in that year. And adults in that in twenty twenty three were reported to have food insecurity about twenty to twenty five percent round figures in any given year. The number is actually a little better in Washington State. It's shy of eight percent, but still clearly it's an issue for people, and certainly it's an issue for members of our own individual community. So, you know, it's it doesn't necessarily mean that people are experiencing food insecurity at all times, but they do experience that percentage some of the time. And it leaves them into making difficult choices as to what do they pay for? Do they pay for rent? Do they pay for healthy food? And those are not choices any of us would would want to make, and it's not good for the members of our community.
Mike, could I just ask a question about that eight percent? Is that is that current or is that twenty one? Or do you have any idea for Washington?
I'm sorry, Joan, you cut out on me. I only I didn't get much of that question.
Okay. The eight percent that you say is Washington food insecurity. Do you know what year that is? For is that for the twenty one ending year or is it current?
I believe that's for the twenty one year. There's some indication that the numbers have gone up in the last year or so nationwide. I don't have numbers for Washington State on that. The trend isn't good nationwide.
They went up after the, that's why I thought eight was low. They went up after the pandemic. You know, extra things went away too.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. And that would have had an effect.
Thanks.
Yeah, so there's a number of ways that we help with food insecurity. There's federal and state food benefit programs such as SNAP and WIC. There's senior and school meal programs. There's community support for food delivery services, food banks, mobile food paste pantries, and community-based food distribution, and also community gardens. So there's there's a number of ways that that we help tackle this issue. In addition to that, we have a whole bunch of regulatory structures that that allow for a number of different things, uses rather, that help with with food distribution and production. And so we can focus on that, too, and this considers everything from looking at wholesalers, retailers, restaurants, co-ops, and farmers markets as ways ways to get food in and out to people that need it. It's also a number of food access programs that the city currently supports, that council supports through your biannual budget process. And there's a fresh farm at Isabella Bush Park that's done by Together in the Tumwater School District. They they have they have kids there that learn how to work in in the farm and how to sell and distribute distribute food, and so that's that's a great program. Garden Raised Bounty is focused on providing community raised garden beds. And that's the way that people can can get access to fresh food without all the distribution hassle. We provide support for senior services for South Sound. They do. They actually do the meal programs at Old Town Center for us now, and they also do meals for Meals on Wheels, which are all familiar with that program. There's a summer youth employment program. Tumwater Community Garden Grant Program, the city provides grants to people in the community that would like to set up a community garden. And we work with Tumwater School District and the Summer Lunch Program. And also with Tumwater Youth Summer Camp, we have a summer camp for kids. And as part of that programming, they get meals there as well. And of course, we work with the Thurston County Food Bank and satellite satellite operations. There's a satellite operation in the headquarters fire station, and we also have the employee fund drive United Way of Thurston County. Every year, we've done that for many, many years, and that provides program support for some of these programs as well. So I mentioned a little bit before about some of the things that the city does in regulatory nature, and this gets in a little more detail on that. We provide for agriculture. And it's it's really more geared towards urban agriculture, as you would expect in an urban area. We allow for community gardens, farmers markets, food processing, food trucks and trailers, and either individual or else. We also have provisions for food truck courts. Of course, restaurants, retail sale of food, and food banks, mobile food paste pantries, and community-based food distributions. I keep trying to say food pastries. I must be getting hungry. So, council member Jefferson provided to us an article from two thousand and eleven on food sharing, and that was that was really great. And it got us as staff to start thinking, what are ways that we can can deal with this? And we found some ways that people are dealing with this in in more innovative ways more recently. We wanted to go through that a little bit and have some suggestions for you there. So we discovered there's jurisdictions right here in Washington State that are and around the nation that are doing food system plans. And these plans take a more broad-based holistic approach to looking at this issue. So we can have a kind of a broad-based array of programs that can that can help with this. So I'd like to go through two examples of that, but they look at everything from preserving farmland, recruiting new farmers to get production up over current levels. Advocate for policies and enable residents and businesses to make to make and process their own food locally, and that has a benefit to from global warming that we don't have. Anything we can do there is not having food transported by truck, ship, or rail, and of course, helping with global climate change. Providing broader access to high-quality food and disseminating better food through nutrition education, what to empower people to make healthier choices. So it's it's a knowledge base that some people may lack as well, besides just access to food or the money to purchase food. And also to reduce food waste through gleaning and redistribution and composting. Again, all that's going to help with global climate change as well. So the first program that we looked at in more detail was Spokane Regional Food Action Plan. And go to my notes here. This is a, and I need to mention, too, that when we get into these these programs, and we're talking about Spokane County. Counties have they're a larger organization, and they deal with some issues that we don't necessarily deal with as much as an urban area, so they'll have programs for farmland because it'll be a substantial farming component to a county that cities typically do not have. But still, it can be instructive to us. The plan's focus in Spokane is supporting the desire for healthy food for all, and included looking at a whole host of actions here that create opportunities for people to grow and share their own food, such as promoting existing emerging educational programs for home and community gardening, cooking and food preservation, increasing land availability, community gardens, and support supporting sustainable food systems and urban agriculture education. Part of this, too, is supporting growing equitable food access. Lots, a lot of times when we found as we started looking at this more closely, there's there's adequate food, but distribution is often a challenge to get food into to areas that may be food deserts. I don't know the necessary have necessarily have food deserts in Tumwater, but those areas that do have food deserts, it's a real issue. So part of this is identifying and reducing barriers barriers to access food, expanding communities supported agriculture or CSAs, and offering SNAP eligible populations that option as well. Promoting expansion of food distribution routes to low resource areas, assessing service capacity needs, food pantries, and identifying opportunities for shared resources there, and advancing equity in the food system. So you can see there's there's just a whole host of things here that Spokane County has has undertaken in, you know, it's really broad based approach to this issue. Next one we looked at was Watcom County Food System Plan. It's got a number of goals. It's to cultivate equity and justice in our food system. It shouldn't come as a shock to any of us that everything we're looking at now, we're trying to look at through an equity lens. And access to food is one of those places that can be a glaring place where equity is is lacking. So Watcom County acknowledges that and examines that. Looks at protecting and regenerating our soil, water, and land, so it's a sustainable operation. Build a resilient and vibrant local food economy, and ensure access to healthy food for all. And also as well to mitigate emissions from food and system activities and adapt the food system to a changing planet. So each of those objectives includes a full range of actions for specific policy and regulatory actions undertaken by the county in a collaborative way. So this is like a lot of the planning efforts that we do. If we were to take this approach is that we lay the groundwork and policy, and then we follow up with specific regulatory actions that result from that holistic look at this to tackle any deficiencies deficiencies there may be in our in our codes or our city operations. So that's that's really the staff recommendation tonight is that we we schedule development of a food system plan that's specific to Tumwater and scaled appropriately to Tumwater. That plan focus could be on how to provide healthy food to our community, reduce food waste, and support local food processing. We're looking at we look at eliminating barriers and addressing gaps in the current system and producing solutions to implement that at the city's scale and to maintain and update resource materials with jurisdictional and community partners, because we know this is this is a regional issue. We don't have to go at this alone. So that would be our recommendation that we actually undertake that work as part of our twenty twenty four work program. And we understand the urgency of this this matter, and so that's why we're suggesting it be in twenty twenty four. As we know, as you all know, we have a big comprehensive plan update that's going to be due in June twenty twenty five and up until the last legislative session. I thought we had that pretty well in hand, but they adopted about a dozen bills that kind of upended everything there and drastically changed how we're going to have to approach that. So we have a lot of work on the table, but we understand the urgency of this, and so we would propose that we factor this into twenty twenty four, just recognizing that we we always live in a in a in a staff resource constrained environment. We'll just have to fit this in and do the best we can with all the other tasks that are before us. So it's kind of a quick go through and at least staff thoughts and recommendations and how we might tackle this issue, and I'd love to hear your your thoughts and questions.
Councilmember Dahlha.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, just a question as we move forward with this, which I'm in support, and I liked the idea and the concept. Is there a way to incorporate some of those elements into our comprehensive plans? Like, are there certain elements of our plan where that would fit?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. You know, we'd have to look at it's not a required element under GMA. But certainly, there'll be an interface between this certainly, and our plan, and the timing is perfect from that standpoint. So I think it's a great comment, and we'll have to keep that in mind as we go through this.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi. Any other questions or just council member Kathy?
Thank you. So what do we do currently, Mike? And I'm I'm looking at this and going, I I don't I don't know where it fits that we have people who grow gardens, you know, in their backyard, or the code allows, you know, acreage on larger lots to have to grow, do agricultural things and so forth. And the people who want to give that away, they want to share that. Certain places in our community where people have the guy next door has twelve, you know, tomato plants, and the person down the street, and and they come together and they put it out. Or they you know, these are, these are good plans. I'm not saying what you what you put out here. I think we really need, we really need to rethink this. But we we also have to think about it very, very locally and very neighborhood-y kind of kind of thing, and so I'm just wondering where it makes me nervous to put it off till another year. I mean, as soon as you say twenty twenty four, I'm going, whoa. We've put a lot of things off that went past the the year we spoke of, and so I I'm I'm trying to balance here, I think. What we what we need now, we're still in a, you know, growing season, going to go into fall and and winter food. Has that been, have you all talked about that?
Well, certainly, you know, we don't get to the granular level in 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 zoning codes necessarily, where, you know, if someone wants to have a garden, it's not it's not addressed. It's considered accessory to the main use, which is a residence, so there's certainly no problem there. We don't regulate if people grow things and produce and fruits and and give those away, you know. But the balance is you know, when if we get into to uses that kind of, we're talking about in residential areas, if we get into uses that take that kind of to the next level, you know, then we get into the kind of discussions that we've had recently. It's like, well, what's what's really appropriate in a in a residential area? And I what I would see is that would be examined in this plan and would give us your thoughts, and ultimately, you would adopt the plan, of course. And then it would provide policy guidance to as to what adjustments, if any, we need to make in our in our regulatory regime. So I don't know the answer to the question yet, because we haven't done the planning yet, but it's definitely all that is on the table to see if we do need to make changes to adapt to what's needed for people out there.
The other comment, thanks for that. The other comment that that I want to make is that many of the things that are listed here as you know, that people can get food or so on and so forth. A a good number of those, you have to be signed up. You have to be eligible. You have to do paperwork. You have to do all kinds of things. And in the meantime, people are hungry and want to and are going to more easily accessible places to get food. And also, if you put with that some of the transportation issues. Like, like, I couldn't go and get something for people who are on SNAP or who are getting it through some of those things that were listed there. Whereas in my community, I've been able for almost, well, many, many months or more to take food to 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 an elderly couple who know who got fearful and quit driving and to another homebound person, and I can just go and get it and take it to them. So I want us to consider that that the that that those things that are listed on there are eligibility limited. And also, some of them are also limited in time. Some of those places are open once a week or their hours change, and it's very difficult to keep up with. The city would have a nightmare trying to keep up with the hours of some of these you know, places that have a food pantry or something like that. So anyway, those were things that came to my mind as I as I read this. So I appreciate the work that that you've done here. I enjoyed reading what some of the other cities were doing also. So thanks for doing that research.
Absolutely. Before I before I forget, I was going to mention I'd be remiss if I forgot, and I almost did. I was on vacation, actually, and Brad and Anne put together the this this presentation. So thank you to them. It would have been a lot thinner. It would have been up to me when I was gone, so.
Councilmember Jefferson, the council member Swirthah.
Yes, first of all, Mike. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to Anne and staff. I believe this is important to to all of us. And what I am seeing is, what I would like to see is a policy on food sharing and food stands in Tumwater, because going to the food bank is not enough for some of our community members. They just can't make it to those places that I saw. So how do we, as homeowners, as community members, share what we have? I know of two people who just can't make it to the food bank. I know people who are ashamed to go to the food bank, though we say there should be, there should be no shame. One was a young lady whose husband was addicted to drugs. So she gets her food from a food sharing facility neighbor. Another one is an old lady whose husband had dementia, and she can't leave him but for a few minutes. So she's using that food sharing site. There's also, so me as a homeowner, I should be able to put my vegetable stand outside of my house along with some canned goods. This way, my neighbors can come and get the foods that they need. There are liability protections in place. This way, I won't get sued. Councilmember Dahlha inquired last year about placing a food sharing box next to the fire station to be maintained by our firefighting unit. She was told negative because of the liabilities involved. Um, we should be shielded from that liability. Two months ago, during my trip to the East Coast, I observed a food sharing pantry located on city property. So my thoughts have changed. Since food insecurity has doubled, and we see from your slide, more of our neighbors have started hosting food sharing activities. So what is the policy? Again, we can't tell hungry people to just visit the food bank. Of course, we do have a bus. Take the bus. It's free. I believe that we need to support, not discourage, food sharing activity and make it easier to allow food sharing throughout Tumwater. So that's my question. What's the policy? Can we get that foods, that food, little food pantry by the fire station? And in full disclosure, I am on the committee for Little Food Pantry because they are now a five oh one C to make it easier to work with other groups to get food to our community members. There's no money, no money changes. It's on paper, and my name is on there for the Little Food Pantry staff. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Swirthah.
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking. I really appreciate the comments as far as the for people that can't attend or can't access the Thurston County Food Bank. Though I did look at just, you know, in the one that is in Tumwater, it looks like from what their website that that there are, it's a no barrier organization. So that one, at least, you know, if they visit the main site, that they should, they're they're able to shop. And at least once a month, and then they can, let's see, there's a full visit two per month, and then there's another one that when there's fresh produce, and so they're notified, but that there that's available to them. So I appreciate that that, yeah, I didn't realize how extensive that was as far as, I mean, when you're talking about barriers to keeping people from getting the food that they need, that at least at the food bank initially, that the one at Tumwater looks like they should be able to shop and find the food that they need. So but I realized that we're talking about other like food stands and different things like that, but just wanted to point that out that what we have in our own backyard with Tumwater, the Thurston County Food Bank is there. So and let our public know that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Ralters.
Thanks, Mayor. One thing I just want to point out for folks who are watching. And if if you happen to be on SNAP or have food benefits of that kind, or if you got some of the summer pandemic EBT cards, maybe if you have a kid in the school district. Safeway, other grocery stores, you can use SNAP for grocery delivery, and you are also allowed to use EBT cards. Like, I could provide an authorized user the ability to use my EBT card to pick up and deliver groceries. That's allowed under state law. That does not solve nearly any of the challenges we're talking about here. I just want to like throw that out there in case there's anyone who's watching, who's wondering like, well, could I get it delivered? Like, the answer is yes. Just go to the website of the grocery store you want to, and SNAP is eligible for those things. And you're also allowed to have authorized users other than yourself using your card at point of sale locations. So that's PSA.
Councilmember Kathy, did you have something else?
One thing I want us to be aware of when we talk about shopping online and so on, a lot of these folks either don't have a computer or are not computer savvy, you know, they don't, they're not looking on the web or looking for where to go to get food, nor do they know how to do the different things like that. So I think that the combination of communication, it it the communicating, I don't know that that is our biggest thing. Maybe maybe it is, it is partly letting people know, but thinking that because we put something online or it is online doesn't necessarily mean many people can, everybody or even a lot of the people can do it. So I think that that along with transportation and so forth is part of what makes us need to or even a lot of the people can do it. So I think that that along with transportation and so forth is part of what makes us need to stay pretty local with uh with some of this. And um I I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that because some of the people that I've helped in my different neighborhoods around, um the the older people are really frustrated by, well, just go to the website or just go to the this, you can do this digitally or something. And they're climbing the walls by the time I get there. But anyway, and I'm not the brightest person about that. Anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Swartham.
I apologize to stand corrected. I was uh reminded that the the one in Tomwater is strictly the warehouse. Um, but they do, and for those uh which uh Councilmember Kathy was talking about being computer savvy, on their website, they do have places where you can go and find out um where you can shop or pick up groceries. And there's just different places throughout. I was just looking for one in particular that was here at Tomwater, but yeah, so anyway, there's information there. So I just wanted to apologize for giving the wrong information.
Well, my understanding actually, councilmember, was that there is a kind of a retail component to that food bank in Tomwater. It needed to be actually from a from a zoning code standpoint. So I think there is.
Councilmember Dahalha.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Yes, that had come up, the the Tomwater location is a warehouse, that there was a misconception that staff at Tomwater thought they couldn't distribute food. That was cleared up. There were noted restrictions from the city. So that's awesome, right? So yes and yes. And I was also uh linking this into when we have talked about our volunteer opportunities in Tomwater. The one thing is linking the food bank and senior services of having community members sign up to be able to deliver those foods in addition to the meals on wheels and stuff like that. Like that could be another element of volunteer engagement and connection in our community. So I just wanted to not lose that track of we have all these ideas that could be another route for our community members to volunteer and help with.
So Lieta, would that be through our volunteer coordinator?
That's what I was thinking, right? We had talked about increasing the FTE. We got the FTE increased. So what does that look like? This could be another example or opportunity, because we talked about um like the community gardens, the little free pantry, the food insecurity. How would that tie into people wanting to help and contribute and then using, going through the volunteer coordinator?
Very good.
Councilmember Jefferson, did you have something else?
Yes, yes, ma'am, Mayor. Um. The urgency is now for this policy. I know things don't move as fast as as it does, you know, from my previous world. But I believe that the urgency is now. We we can't wait for um twenty twenty four to address uh the zoning code to changing our zoning code to allow for more food sharing or just making making it clear. I understand um our staff are 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 overworked. Lots of moving pieces, but city administrator, mayor, can we authorize some overtime for this um to get this moving? For us to get some resolution on this, um for us, for us to make this happen.
So I can, I can jump in for just a second. So the city of Tomwater actually has um a lot of opportunities within its existing structure and regulatory environment. A lot of it is making sure that we've got good clarity for both our staff members and the community in terms of communicating what those opportunities are. There is an opportunity, I believe, for um increasing people's awareness of of what those things are and where they can go. Um, you know, anytime you're looking for um um like social services types of um of uh opportunities or things and access to services, those types of services in a community, it's hard to understand where what all is available because there are a lot. There's, there's nonprofits, there's governmental agencies, there's a whole plethora of people that are um uh trying to provide services that people need, including these. And I I know, so so there are opportunities within our existing communication structure perhaps to be able to um to move forward with um with uh addressing and and making the opportunities that we currently have available more well-known. In terms of code amendments, there are specific processes that have to be followed. And we have, and 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 the process is because it requires public participation, by law, it requires public participation. Those processes are very structured, very um rigid. They they include a lot of public participation and they take time. Um, and so in terms of trying to address a zoning code amendment right now, it it right now is outside the process of of um uh zoning code amendments. And Mike, you need to jump in here and make sure that I'm not that I'm not speaking out of turn, but um we can't go outside of the processes that we have available to make amendments to the zoning code regardless of what the the issue or the topic is. I do, um, I do feel like we can commit to trying to make what we do have available more well-known um in the interim. And and part of the issue too, and the beauty of the these food system plans is they help us identify the gaps and the and the and the shortcomings that and help us better target what the actual solutions are um that that address our specific local issues in terms of our overall food system um environment in the community. So I'm sure that's not satisfactory, Councilmember Jefferson. Um, and I I apologize for that. Um. Um, but I do feel like staff is working very hard to try and work um uh through these issues ensure that we are doing as much as we can within the existing regulatory environment that we have to operate within and work as hard as we can within the um process we have available for amending our regulatory environment, um that we're doing that as well. So we're trying to approach this from as many times as possible, as many pathways as possible. So it isn't necessarily even as much an issue of workload as it is the proper process for um uh amending regulatory environment, the regulatory environment. And Mike, I don't know if I butchered that horribly or.
No, that was, that was actually really good. There is just, there is quite a bit of process. Uh, cause we force operating in a public, a public environment. We need to hold public hearings. We need to do environmental review on a any change. Um, so, you know, administrator Park is absolutely right. It just take, it just takes time. You know, it's not the kind of thing that's done in in a in a few weeks.
So I see several councilmembers' hands up, so I'll go to them uh shortly, but I just wanted to do a reminder too that several years ago, and I, Mike, you might be able to remember what year it was, we did the urban farming. And uh that allows uh gardens, raising chickens, no boosters, raising chickens and some others, depending upon the size of your property. There was other animals that you could also raise. And I just know within my neighborhood, within a four-block area, there are five gardens and one of them is a whole city lot and two chicken operations. And that's really close to City Hall. So sometimes I think that individuals who have those gardens, because I got one garden, you know, unless they do an enormous amount of canning, may not use all of the fruit, fruit, all the vegetables and things that they use. So maybe those individuals who have gardens might wanna share more with their neighbors or make, uh, you know, some of that available too or check with nonprofits. Um, but I do know that uh there are several um uh s- you know, that was one of the things we did with the urban farming um task force. So uh with that, I'm going to go to all uh Councilmember Alt Hauser, Councilmember Dahaloff, and Councilmember Kathy. That's how it came up. So go ahead, Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thanks, um, Mayor. I I guess the thing that I'm sort of thinking about is that, you know, if the ask is like, let's create a change and go through the process of creating a zoning amendment for um explicitly authorizing food pantries in different zones. Like those, I I think what we learned, um, you know, I I'm trying, trying to be very careful to not go into current events and things that are still unfolding, but what we've learned is that those are allowed. It doesn't specifically say it in our code, but there's nothing actually prohibiting those things, so long as they're not in the right way, which is the same as the free little libraries. And a couple of years ago, there was an inquiry to the city that was like, are free little libraries allowed? That's not stated anywhere in the zone in the zoning code. Mike, I believe the response to that was a memorandum that essentially analyzed the code and said, yeah, these are allowed under this thing, which is not judicial decision, it's not change zoning amendment. But I wonder if we could get a memo that says, yep, pantry is allowed through the zoning code because they are. And that would then be an easy thing to do in the meantime, doesn't involve a zoning change, because they don't actually have to do one. Like it doesn't say free little libraries anywhere in our zoning maps. It's just that people don't really know about it. But I wonder if that can be sort of a basis or a stopgap for something that can be done in terms of analysis for like, yeah, these things are allowed now. Um, because they are. And, you know, I I want the public to know about it, too. I have a big garden, um, and I think it would be great for easier to to give those things away. And if that was more clear, you know, maybe more people would apply for those community grants that we do. You know, the neighborhood improvement grant, it's like a thousand bucks or whatever. You know, if that was more clear, maybe more people would apply for that. Maybe that'd be a new opportunity to provide food to neighbors in a low barrier sort of way. Um, so I wonder if that's something that could be viable, because they're they're not disallowed. It's just nobody knows about it, which is the problem from my perspective. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Dahalha.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I wanna add my two cents to Michael's two cents. That's what I was gonna say. We don't need to change the zoning. We're making this more complicated. And I also think it's a great reminder that our job as council is policy. So if Angela makes a motion to do something like that, I would second it, and that's our job. So I know there's bureaucracy. I know there's processes. And that's the whole point. We would be open. And we're supposed to be responsive to the needs and things that we're seeing. So I'm in support of Angela's idea. I'm in support of Michael. I don't think we need to change the ch- the zoning. And I would second any motion to get this done because that's our job as council, is to do policy.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna clarify with uh Michael something. He he uses the term uh pantry. And that brings me back to the size of a of a the libraries and thinking we're gonna put stuff in there. And I think what we're talking about is not only food pantries, but we're talking about food stands. We're talking about, you know, something, ne- neither of which are are banned in in our code, but I don't wanna limit it to people thinking it just is like the library kind of thing. So that's a language, just a language deal, but I, um, yeah, I I think it's really important. And I I agree with uh with Lieta. I I think that we've, we've made some changes without, you know, long regulatory uh kinds of, kinds of things. So um I would like to see us do what Michael said, do what Angela is suggesting, do what Lieta is moving toward. And also, I wanna say, Debbie, um, I remember the urban thing and the other, one of the other animals that you were trying to think of are bees. Remember, we increased the amount of bees that we could have uh based on that church over there that was doing sweet things with their honey. And so that was, that was one of the other things, which delighted all of us. So anyway, those were things that we did change in the midst of uh of life without uh a full zoning change.
Yeah, and I think goats was also, but I think you had to have an acre for the goats, so.
Have a what?
Uh, and I I think I remember goats, and I'd have to read it again, but I think that was like an acre or something you had to have for goats. So because that's goat milk and a whole bunch of other things. So, yeah, so. Councilmember Jefferson.
I would like to make a motion.
We, okay, so I need to, I we are not in a, we're in a work session, so we don't have anything specific in front of us. So um, can I get Karen's to?
I'm here.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the question? I mean, uh ideally, um, if this is something that you wanna, specific that you wanna put on agenda, um, I would recommend that it would go to uh, the deadline typically is passed for the next agenda packet, so the following formal regular meeting. Um, but yes, I would recommend that it, that it be put on a a first or third Tuesday meeting. And and if you could let us know exactly what it is they want to bring forward, that would be helpful for staff.
Yeah, because we need to have specifics of what it is and and everyone have time to review it.
Oh, what meeting are we talking about?
The next council meet, next coun- uh the council meeting in October.
October third.
Okay, so a motion to allow for more food sharing activity in Tomwater?
Just, yeah, just ma- just send what you're wanting to do, so we're all clear exactly what it is we're voting on.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Uh, can, uh, yes, Lisa.
Can I ask a, just a quick clarifying question because I um I wanna make sure that uh uh we are gonna understand sort of where the, where the council is. And so what I heard um Councilmember Alt Hauser say is, we don't need a code amendment necessarily. We've already got provisions. We just need to be more clear about what those are. Um, is that, is that, is that what you said, Councilmember Alt Hauser?
Yeah, what I was suggesting was essentially an administrative memorandum stating that this type of thing is allowed on an individual's private parcel. Um, which I I don't know what the motion would would be, but uh unless it's like a resolution about food insecurity that also states that, you know, these things are allowed, like I could, like maybe that's a resolution that demonstrates um our commitment to working on food insecurity and things of that kind, but you know, a a a motion to change the code or the policy in the city, I'm not sure what that would look like because it's, because it's already allowed. What I was suggesting was like an administrative memorandum.
Yeah, and I I think, so we can do a couple of things, but there are a couple of things that we can't do. And and one of the challenges with this topic is that there, because there isn't a lot of clarity or definition in the code currently, we use an interpretation process. That is, we've been doing that. And there are, when we talk about food stands, food pantries, um that means, that probably means something different to every single one of you um uh on the screen right now. Um. And the issue becomes wh- what kind of pantry are we talking about? How big is it? I mean, we can clarify generally what is um uh allowed in the zoning code. But that also, there there are also certain um, certain parameters that cannot be exceeded in different zoning districts. So every single zoning district to a certain degree is going to have a different regulatory environment for some of these types of activities. So when you get to a certain size of this, this, this activity, which is um, which is, um, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is there are certain components, certain characteristics of types of activities of giving away food and that that may or may not be consistent with the zoning regulations, which is generally why we issue administrative interpretations of the zoning code on a site-specific basis. Because it it, um, I mean, we can do a general, I I believe, and Karen can um pop on and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we can do a memo that says, generally speaking, if it's this, that, if it's X, Y, and Z, then it's, then it's considered an accessory use and we can, and we can put, and and that, and we can make that clarification. But beyond that, and some of what we're talking about is beyond the basics. That's gonna be, excuse me, both site-specific as well as zone-specific. And so we 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 also have the ability And so we, we, we also have the ability, as they come up, to deal with individual site-specific situation, if that makes sense. I, I just want to make sure that I understand what you want and that you under- that the council understands that we, we can, we can, we a part of what you're talking about, and, and it's not gonna then be consistent or applicable across the board in certain circumstances. Does that make sense?
So that, that would mean in a residential area. So are we, you know, batting our head against the wall here, or what? Because you're, what you're saying could limit, uh, you know, ninety percent of what we're saying.
Well, I don't know what, I guess that's my point, uh, councilmember Kathy. Um, that, that's where I met, said, when you say, when you use a certain term and certain words, it means one thing to you and it means another thing to somebody else. And that's, that's why we have interpretation processes with zoning codes anyway. And so I, I just, I don't want to, I don't want the council to be given an expectation that, that, that some of the current issues that we're dealing with are going to be resolved because we're going to write a memo that makes some clarifications. We absolutely can clarify the current regulatory environment. And we've actually done that already around this topic. But in this case, we wrote an interpretation of the code, Mike wrote an interpretation of the code, um, that was clear in terms of why something wasn't permitted. And so the, the challenge here is that we have, um, uh, zoning regulations that include definitions and different zones and different allowances within those zones for different types of activities. So it's just, it's not gonna be a blanket statement, um, that's gonna, um, resolve this issue a whole lot further than where we are currently. Um, any, anything more than what we're doing right now in terms of, um, providing better understanding of what our code al- already allows isn't gonna happen without it, without a code change. And I just don't, I just don't want to create an expectation on the part of the council members that we're gonna be able to do something that we can't do outside of the typical regulatory process. And I hope I didn't confuse things more.
I, I think that's, just to chime in on that, Lisa, that's a great explanation. I've only done a handful of administrative determinations over all these years. They really just come up when we're looking at a particular issue, and it's not clear. Uh, it's not, it's not a rezone, we're not adding uses, I don't have that authority to do that on my own. That's something that the planning commission, the council can only do. It's really just making a determination that we can put in writing so that we can be consistent in how we interpret things. Uh, staff come and go, we've got those determinations to help guide things. But Lisa's absolutely right, it's not gonna be, you know, for example, you can do industrial uses in a commercial zone or do commercial uses in a residential zone. It's not, it's never gonna be anything like that, because it's not legal and it's not appropriate.
So, uh, councilmember Jefferson and councilmember Dahlhoff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe that every Tumwater homeowner, myself, should be allowed to share and just distribute food on my private property. As long as there's not an eighteen-wheeler truck or utility vehicles delivering food all day, every day of the week with vehicular, uh, traffic clogging up my neighborhood street, I think we can create policy guidelines to make it okay to share. What I am hearing is, in 2024, we're gonna look at those changes, uh, to policy and the zoning codes. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
So, Mike, uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, but, um, councilmember Jefferson, you as an individual property owner with your own garden, absolutely currently, without any change, without any question, have the ability to give food to whomever you want to. You can set it out on your front porch, you can set it out on your sidewalk, there is nothing that prohibits you from doing that.
Okay, I can, I can put my Pop-Tarts out there, my canned beans out there, my ravioli out there to share with my neighbors.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing I guess I need to circle back, and thank you, Mike, and thank you, Lisa, for this discussion as well. Um, the one thing I'm wondering is, it, it sounds like there could be a discrepancy of what council feels comfortable with in the determination that is being made. So as we pursue this discussion moving forward, could we also get a temperature check from our council members regarding what they want to see, like from Angela, and then versus what determinations that staff are doing? Because I feel like there could be a disconnect there, so I'd like to continue that conversation moving forward.
So if I can respond, and then I'm gonna call on Karen as well. So I'm not sure specifically, um, uh, councilmember Dahlhoff, uh, what, what you're asking in terms of, um, let, let me say this, the zoning regulations exist. They are reviewed and adopted through a public participation po- process that is identified and required by state law and by local codes. City staff has the obligation and the requirement to implement those regulations as they exist. And that's what we do. And, and this, and in this, in the course of the zoning regulations, in the, the zoning code itself, it says that the community development director issues the interpretations. And so, and so that's what we've done, and, and, and absolutely we can do that. In terms of, um, under, so I don't know if that answers your question, um, but.
I guess moving forward, thank you, Lisa, moving forward. If council doesn't agree with a determination, then that means council needs to look at that policy and clarify things so that everyone's on the same page. That is my point, that I feel like there's some discrepancies in, you've mentioned, uh, nomenclature, verbiage, definition, word choice. I think that needs to be an ongoing conversation, so we're all on the same page, so that I get a better feel for why Mike is making certain determinations that, because I guess I'm using different words or the definition is different. So as we move forward, can, can we really work on that foundation of nomenclature and definitions?
Absolutely, and that, and that's where, and that's where the, those, all of that nomenclature and all of those regulations and all the policies currently are manifest in the zoning code itself. So as we, and, and that's what we need to be able to change. So this is a multi-step process, right? We're gonna work on trying to be really, really clear about what we currently can do, because there is a lot of confusion based on current situations, right? We're gonna be really clear with our staff and with the public what you can do under the current zoning regulations. Concurrently, we're gonna look at this holistic approach that includes way more than just looking at the zoning code and looking at other, a wide variety of options and opportunities to address the issues of, um, food insecurities citywide in a more comprehensive holistic manner through this food safety program, this food systems plan. And the first step, again, is identifying really what are the barriers, what are the problems, what are the gaps? And then, and then creating the different policies out of that analysis. So, um, so we're doing things concurrently. We're trying to do as much as we can in the existing regulatory environment that we have and provide as much clarity as we can. At the same time, we're recommending that we go through this other process and be able to expand upon what we have through the proper required processes in terms of if it require, if the, if the solutions require a change to the zoning code, then we would go through that process in order to accomplish that. If we come up with other programs that we can do internally through the Parks Department, any of these other things that these great examples have come up with, then we can, um, um, implement those through a different methodology.
Councilmember Kathy.
Yeah, I just have, have a question. Uh, Lisa, in explaining about zoning codes and changing them, did I hear you say there's a, there's a time for that, that we just can't do that anytime in the calendar?
That's my understanding, and I'm gonna punt over to Mike. Um, and all I will say is that, that the state law requires that we have a process that includes your planning commission and public involvement. And I believe our count, our city code probably has a process identified. So, Mike, over to you.
Yeah, you know, it, it is, it's a legislative decision, so the council could decide, if you want to do this, you want to make a change in the zoning code, and you want to start working on it right away. We would then go to the planning commission, after we understand what you want, and start working on that. They would, we'd have to hold a public hearing, we have to do environmental review, we'd have to do all, all those, all those things. Uh, take public comment, it ju- it would, it just takes time. And we do have an adopted work program for this year, so we would have to come back to you with that work program and say, if we're gonna do this, what is it we're not going to do? So we'd have to look at that, um. So that, that is an option that, that you can direct us to do. Um, I would caution, I've seen this happen, you know, before. It can be difficult with the motions around an issue to craft effective legislation. And it's pretty, it's, it can be difficult to kind of back engine, engineer your way out of, I want, I want to allow this thing to happen. It can have a lot of unintended consequences when we start looking, because any changes you make, of course, are gonna be global to the entire city. And, uh, so we just need to, that's the thread, that's, when we do this work, that's the needle, we'll need the thread. How do we do what you want to do without having undue impacts, so that we're not, you know, causing a bunch of impacts that we come back in a year or two and have to unwind when it didn't work? So that's why I would really prefer to look at this in a more holistic way, so you have all that in front of you, and we can do this in a considered way and get it right the first time.
So the answer to my question is that there's not a, a season or a certain time that we can do changes. We could start this process now. And the thing is, is you, that you're consistently saying is that it's a process, and it has many steps and many things in it. But we could start it if we want it, you know, taking into consideration everything you're saying, but it's not restricted to a certain time, because there was a time when we made these things. I've been on council long enough when we've changed or made new codes or something. So they're not, they're not etched in stone quite, but, uh, pretty much, pretty much so, but, uh, but anyway.
No, no, they aren't. The only thing that's, that's limited to a particular timeframe is, is comprehensive plan amendments. And typically those are, are once a year, unless it's declared an emergency by the council. But yeah, you can, absolutely can, can adjust codes, uh, as needed.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that, I just wanted to clarify, thanks, Michael, thanks, Lisa, appreciate it.
Right, any other questions or comments? All right, so I knew this would be a big topic. So now we have two more items, and we're an hour into our meeting. So I will go ahead and move to the 2022 Green Team Sustainability Report. And Alyssa Jones Wood, I believe you're on here, if I will kick it over to you.
Yes, hello, um, let me get my screen chair set up here. Good evening, um. All right, can you all see the presentation's, uh, slide?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, good evening, um, I have to say it was really exciting to hear about, um, food justice be discussed at Lincoln City Council meeting, so that was a great thing to follow, so thank you for letting me listen to that. Um, I'm here to talk to you about the 2022 Green Team Sustainability Report. Um, so this is looking at the calendar year of 2022, looking back. The Green Team, realize there might be a little, okay. The Green Team is an interdepartmental committee, um, of city staff that focuses on sustainability of city operations. So we're strictly internal-focused. Tonight, I'm gonna go through that annual report, I think this is the fourth or fifth one that, um, has been brought to city council. I'll go through greenhouse gas emissions, both total and net, city fleet, buildings, employee commute, water consumption, solid waste, some of the things that Green Team worked on last year that aren't necessarily, um, included in those numbers and pie charts that I'll be showing you, uh, some progress, uh, measurements towards our goals and some recommended next steps. So city operations produced an estimated three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six metric tons carbon dioxide equivalent in 2022. This is a three percent reduction from the 2015 baseline. Um, we have a goal to, um, community-wide for forty-five percent reduction by 2030 and eighty percent reduction by 2015. Here is a pie chart that shows, um, basically what parts of city operations are contributing the most, uh, for greenhouse gas emissions. Most of it is water infrastructure, followed by our vehicle fleet, buildings and facilities, sewer and streetlights, solid waste, and traffic signals in that order. So that's our total emissions, so that's actually what goes up into the atmosphere as a result of our operations. Our net emissions, um, have gone down tremendously. Last year, they were also down about seventy percent, this year it's seventy-one percent reduction of our net emissions. So that's our total minus, um, our participation in Puget Sound Energy's Green Direct program. So we purchase renewable energy certificates, uh, for a hundred percent of our electricity use for all city operations, and that, taking out the electricity chunk of our city operations, reduces our net emissions by seventy-one percent. Here is a picture of the Lund Hill Solar Farm, which was added to the portfolio for PSE's Green Direct program. Last year, all of our energy came from, or 2021, all of it came from the Skookumchuck Wind Farm. 2022, it came both from Skookumchuck Wind Farm and the Lund Hill Solar Farm. So moving into our, uh, vehicle fleet, um, in 2022, our fleet vehicles use sixty-four thousand and some odd gallons of gasoline and almost eighteen thousand gallons of diesel. This is a nine percent decrease from our, uh, fuel consumption baseline in 2019. I'll note that the greenhouse gas emission baseline is 2015, everything else essentially is 2019, so, um. And in 2022, the Green Team developed and passed an anti-idle policy for our fleet vehicles. So I have a couple images here on the screen. The first one on the left is a renewable diesel tank. Um, in 2022, fleet found a reliable source of renewable diesel and has started testing it out in the city's street, street sweeper. Um, there have been no issues with using that fuel in that vehicle, and we're currently working towards a full transition to renewable diesel R99 at our diesel fueling station. Renewable diesel is a fuel made from fats and oils like canola and soybean. It's processed to be like a one-to-one replacement for petroleum diesel. Uh, studies have shown that it does have less carbon dioxide and nitrogen oxide emissions when compared to petroleum diesel, but it still has tailpipe emissions. Um, this, us switching to renewable diesel for our diesel vehicles does not mean that we're not actively looking to electrify vehicles. Um, it just means that while we figure out funding mechanisms to transition those heavier-duty vehicles that use diesel to electric, um, that they'll be having lower emissions while we work on that transition. Uh, pie charts on the right here, gasoline consumption by department, police use forty-seven percent, water resources and sustainability twenty percent, and, um, diesel forty-eight percent from water resources and sustainability. I'll note that water resources and sustainability has a lot of vehicles, um, so that partially skews the numbers. In terms of electric vehicles, um, at the end of 2022, we had one battery electric vehicle in our fleet. We had fourteen hybrid vehicles, which are made up both of regular hybrids and plug-in hybrids. We had a hundred and twenty-one gas-powered vehicles and thirty-two diesel-powered vehicles. We did put it in order for ten, um, Ford Lightning trucks, which will hopefully show up any day now. Um, and we've had meetings with Ford about, um, what to expect with getting those vehicles and, um, how are the kinds of chargers that we have, how that plays a role in the, um, quickness that they get those vehicles to us. Um, in 2022, we added chargers for our fleet vehicle and now, the fleet vehicles, and now we have a total of eight Level Two charging ports specifically for fleet. And in October, um, 2022, uh, at the urging of the Green Team, the city's Nissan Leaf, the white Nissan Leaf, um, which is the one battery electric vehicle in 2022, it was reclassified from a, a single dedicated person's vehicle to a fleet, a, a pool vehicle. And you can see here on the chart here that shows the electricity used to charge vehicles in our fleet yard, um, that the use went up as soon as it became a fleet vehicle. In 2022, city operations used thirty-three thousand terms of natural gas. Um, city council has adopted a strategic priority for our future buildings to be electric, but at this time, there's no established time-based target to reduce city operations' natural gas consumption in existing buildings. Um, on the pie chart here, you can see what is using natural gas in city operations, and it's our buildings, no surprise. City Hall being, uh, the top user, fire stations, um, using it both for heating and cooling in the fire stations. Um, City Hall building number two, that's part of operations and maintenance. Um, City Hall building number two, that's part of operations and maintenance facilities and maintenance, so on and so forth. There were actually twenty-three more uh, heating degree days in twenty nineteen, the baseline, um, than in twenty twenty-two. So it's not really because of that. Electricity, um, we used a lot of electricity in city facilities. We actually used five point three percent more electricity in city facilities than the twenty nineteen baseline. Most of that is being utilized for our water infrastructure. So producing and distributing our clean drinking water to our um, residents and customers, buildings and facilities uses the next amount of uh, twenty-five percent. Sewer infrastructure, streetlights, traffic signals and EV chargers is in there, but it had such a small amount compared to the others. Um, you can see the bar chart here where we're trending in terms of our baseline and our goal. Um, we are above both uh, the baseline and the goal. In terms of renewable energy, um, the panels on the roof of City Hall uh, produced point three eight percent of City Hall's electricity consumption for the year. However, we do purchase those renewable energy certificates uh, for a hundred percent of city operations electricity consumption. So that is coming um, from renewable sources on paper. In terms of the employee commute, um, the commuter production policy was paused during the COVID nineteen pandemic because most of the focus of that was telecommuting and um, incentivizing telecommuting. And during the pandemic, people were telecommuting by force. So the Green Team revised and relaunched the commuter production policy to freshen it up and make it a little bit better. And part of that was removing telework as an incentivized action because that's now a widespread practice that most of us are doing. We added wa- walking, biking and taking transit uh, to the CTR, the commuter production policy because that hadn't been in there um, prior. And we created an incentive for employees to purchase or lease new or used battery electric vehicles and plug-in hybrid vehicles. Also in twenty twenty-two, we installed three charging stations at City Hall that are intended both for public use and workplace charging. And now this next slide is not included in the report. Um, it's just something that I've, I've gotten used to getting the question after I show the charger. So I wanted to just put the data out here. Here is some data on the use of our uh, charging stations at City Hall. So since they were installed in April, we have facilitated one hundred and sixteen charge sessions with an average cost per charge of less than a dollar fifty. Uh, total cost for that charging uh, for the electricity for charging is a hundred and seventy-two dollars so far to date. And you can see here, the bar chart shows uh, the darker color is the number of charge sessions and the lighter color is the cost of those sessions uh, total for the month in dollars. Moving on to water, um, in twenty twenty-two, we used twenty-one point eight million gallons of potable water. This is a twelve percent decrease from the baseline year. Uh, parks and right-of-way use the most of our um, potable water, followed by indoor water. Indoor water went up uh, significantly. Well, it was one percent of the pie last year. Now it's eleven percent of the pie. Um, and the bar chart here shows over the past three years, um, kind of how that spread goes between the four main uses of potable water. So you can see that in rights of way and in buildings and landscaping that the consumption is going down. Uh, but in parks and indoor water that the consumption is going up. In terms of reclaimed water, we used a lot more reclaimed water than we did potable water, um, thirty-nine point six million gallons um, for irrigating the golf course. So if that puts into perspective how important it is that we're using this um, reused resource um, for a purpose that does not require uh, drinking water, quality water. Um, hopefully this bar chart is helpful for that. Uh, in terms of solid waste, this is still an estimate, just like last year, based on the container size and the frequency of pickup from LeMay. Um, we have not completed a solid waste audit, so this is our best guess. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we estimate that we uh, produced four hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine pounds of solid waste. That does not include solid waste produced at parks nor street sweeping waste. We are composting and recycling thirty-three percent of our city operations' waste by weight, which is uh, pretty high. Um, but we're working to get even better with that because our goal is to reduce waste more than we currently are. So um, the more that we can divert from landfills, the easier we can get to that goal. It's enough of the pie charts for a little while. Um, thanks for dealing with all of those. In terms of Green Team activities, more qualitative measure of what we've been working on. In twenty twenty-two, we produced the twenty twenty-one Green Team Sustainability Report. We drafted and passed an internal anti-idling policy. We drafted and passed an update to the internal uh, commuter production policy. We pass, we proposed providing EV charging for free for five-year period, which was uh, approved by the city attorney. We helped guide the development of the compost procurement ordinance, which is when that interdepartmental nature of the Green Team is really, really, really helpful. We drafted updates to the Tumwater Purchasing Manual uh, to add sustainability requirements, which is in final review. And I meant to change this from abandoned to on hold. Um, we drafted a carbon offsets policy for work-related travel. It's on hold, not abandoned. In terms of some progress towards our goal, um, we have achieved and are working to maintain progress on reducing those net emissions. So like I said, we're at seventy-one percent below our baseline this year. That's far exceeds the forty-five percent, but we want to make sure that we continue to keep that down um, and keep getting better. Uh, we have achieved um, increasing the percentage of renewable energy being used for city activities with a hundred percent of our electricity coming from renewable energy. And we have achieved and will work to continue our progress to reduce water usage. Things that still need work that aren't quite at the goals yet is reducing our total city operation emissions. So what we actually put out into the atmosphere from our activities. Uh, we haven't been on, on the mark for uh, reducing electricity usage two percent per year. Uh, like I said, over five percent increase this year over the baseline and reducing solid waste garbage. We're not on track yet, but we are trending downward. And then one that we're revisiting next year because there wasn't a metric this year to measure against because the commuter production policy was on hold for most of the year is that in, increasing the employee alternative transportation for their commutes. So some recommended next steps is to fund and carry out the electrification and efficiency improvements that are recommended by the investment grade audit that we're doing this year. Uh, we're working with McDonald Miller to do that investment grade audit. Um, any day now, we'll be getting those preliminary costs and savings. And then by the end of the year, we should have the energy services proposal. Another great next step would be pass a resolution establishing a commitment to electrifying existing city buildings, either at, by a certain date or as our natural gas equipment reaches the end of its useful life, but formalizing that commitment for our existing buildings. Uh, to conduct a formal waste audit of city operations and forever to continue implementing the thirst and climate mitigation plan, both regionally and as an individual jurisdiction, which I'll get to a bit more in my next presentation. And my last slide is a thank you to all of the members of the Green Team who are part of this work. Um, so I'll read them out. Um, Dan Smith, Troy Neimeyer, Ann Cook, Brad Medred, Brianna Feller, Carrie Gillam, Todd Anderson, Officer Roscoe Rollman, Wes Holmgren, Mark Levak, Matt Ames, Erica Smith Erickson, Grant Gilmore and Shane Brady. And also, um, Dave Bradley deserves a lot of kudos. This gentleman has continued for years to give us a greenhouse gas inventory for city operations for free, which is normally the value of like fifteen thousand dollars or more. He does this for free for us every year. Um, so I wanted to make sure that he got his kudos because he is incredibly valuable to me. So from there, I will uh, take any questions that you might have about the Green Team Sustainability Report.
Any questions? Thank you, Alyssa. Any questions? Excellent. So I'll let you get into your next presentation, which is the Tumwater uh, Climate Work Program.
Alright, let me get that one up on the screen here. Just a moment. They both look the same, so I want to make sure it's the right one. I have too many PowerPoints open at the same time. I apologize. Just a moment.
Mayor, can I ask Alyssa a quick question while she's pulling that up?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, not really a question. I had mess- uh, messaged Alyssa earlier regarding um, when we're talking about sustainability of toxins and products. And so I don't want to lose that piece. So amazing report, awesome. And that Alyssa is also working in um, tracking toxins and products, removing those in procurement and contracts, right? Because Tumwater buys a lot of stuff and does a lot of services. So I don't want to lose that aspect. A lot of times we get so focused on greenhouse gases that we forget there's also an impact with the things that we're consuming. So thank you, Alyssa, for that work.
Of course, I'm trying not to have carbon tunnel vision in my work as best I can. Alright, um, is the Tumwater Climate Work Program, is that what's showing up on your screen?
It is.
Okay, great. Thank you. I need to preface this by uh, uh, something that has changed, that hasn't yet formally changed, that changes the way. I'll get simpler about that. Okay. At, on the nineteenth, I will be bringing forward um, a new inter-local agreement with the other jurisdictions that we work on climate together. I'm happy to answer questions now if you want, or better when we have the ILA in front of you all and you've been, been able to read it. Um, it kind of changes the focus on who does what. So I'll try to explain it here and um, if it's not clear, please stop me, ask me to clarify, and then I'll get into the rest of it because the rest of it kind of banks on this being clear. Um, so the uh, Tumwater City Council accepted the climate mitigation plan in twenty twenty-one. It includes strategies and a regional path for reducing our emissions, our net greenhouse gas emissions, community-wide emissions, forty-five percent by twenty thirty and eighty-five percent by twenty fifty compared to a twenty fifteen baseline. Implementation of that plan can be done by one jurisdiction independently, by one or more jurisdictions together, or by all four jurisdictions together. This year, um, we kind of tried to give an umbrella term for people, we were referring to the TCMP, TRPC, lots of T and C acronyms. So uh, we added another one to try and clarify the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, which speaks to the structure of the, of the executive committee, the Climate Advisor, Community Advisory Work Group and the Staff Group that work to implement this plan on a regional but also individual jurisdiction basis. They decided at their annual retreat that we would identify at least one um, regional action to work on every year. That we would convene all three arms of that group um, to identify that one regional action. Um, because in, in the past, the structure that it was set up with made it difficult to determine can we act individually or do we all have to act together at the same time? So we tried to clarify that. And I want to clarify that jurisdictions can act independently. Um, we can implement this plan by ourselves. We can work with others as well. Um, and there is the expectation to work all together on at least one thing every year. Did that make sense?
I think so. You may get more questions later.
Okay. So to help communicate that to the general public, because we have a lot of acronyms, there's three arms of this thing. Uh, we have seventy-two actions over many years with two, with a baseline and two different goal years. It gets very confusing. We have a template jurisdiction work program for each jurisdiction, and we've all used it um, to fill out the same information, release it at the same time and put it in the same place. So that um, hopefully we can better communicate to the general public exactly what we as individual jurisdictions are working on in the next two years together. Two years to one year, depending on if we have a biennial budget as a jurisdiction or a single-year budget. Okay. So our, um, as you're aware, climate change is a very large and complex issue. As such, the city's work on the solutions and mitigation spans multiple departments. Uh, for this twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four work program, work is being done by my department, Water Resources and Sustainability, also by Transportation and Engineering, also by Parks and Recreation and the Community Development Department. We also get tremendous amount of help from the communications team at the city to make sure that all of this information from all of our projects is communicated well um, to the general public. Uh, this work plan um, shows actions that will be taken um, from January first of this year to the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, like I said, this work plan covers many departments. So while I am the project manager for some of these actions and these projects in the work program, I'm um, not for all, so I'll do my best to answer. But for some projects that aren't under my purview, I might be able to answer basic questions, but not specific ones. So caveat. And now I'll really show you stuff. So this, uh, I told it, totaled up the investments that each project manager gave me when putting together this climate work program. And it ended up showing me that the city, through all of these efforts, is investing twenty-six million dollars between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four on projects and programs that advance the strategies of the Thurston Mitigation Plan. And while some of the, the impetus of some of these projects might not have been the climate plan at all, um, they could be another plan. The overlap is worth mentioning and noting, uh, because these actions are um, advancing the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And I realize that twenty-six million dollars is a very large number, especially for a city like uh, the size of Tumwater. Um, so I want to just point out that nine point six million dollars of that twenty-six million dollars is coming from awarded grants and that we have more money in, that's pending and that are shown in the work program as um, grant funding dependent. Um, of the twenty-six million dollars, most of that money is being advanced and spent um, from transportation and land use sector. Uh, so one might ask, how is the twelve million dollar I five Trosper Capital Project a climate action? Well, one of the strategies in the TCMP is increasing the efficiency of the transportation system, which explicitly lists roundabouts. Um, as an example of that work, also the project is improving bike and pedestrian infrastructure, which is another strategy in the TCMP. So for the next couple of slides, I'll go through sector by sector of the plan. Um, what it, some of the, what the, some of the strategies are from the plan and what we will be doing over the next year and a half. Buildings and energy is the largest emitting sector in Thurston County. The strategies in the TCMP um, aimed to, to reduce those emissions include reducing energy use in all, all existing building types, reducing energy use in new buildings, increasing the production of local renewable energy and moving away from natural gas. Um, the photo here is one of our two solar installations completed this year at water infrastructure sites. Um, I tried to include pictures of our progress in all of these, so hopefully there is fun for you as they are for me. Some of the work that we'll be doing and that we have been doing in twenty twenty-three and forward in twenty twenty-four includes submitting for Seoul Smart Designation. I'll be back on the nineteenth for that too. Adopting new state building code that requires heat pumps and new construction and can, uh, can, they continued LED lighting upgrades at city facilities. The photo here is of electricians completing the LED lighting project last year at the Tumwater Library. In terms of transportation and land use strategies in the TCMP, that includes increasing urban density, increasing the efficiency of the transportation system, increasing the adoption of electric vehicles, increasing mode share for lower carbon forms of transportation such as walking, biking and transit. The picture here is from the twenty twenty-two road improvement projects, I think, um, which added extra space for bikes on seventy-ninth. Some of the work for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four in the sector include multiple transportation projects. You saw the pie chart. It was majority of the section. Uh, so Lynwood Avenue sidewalk, trail improvements like the Palermo Wellfield Trail, as well as an in-house uh, fleet electrification plan, which we were just talking about in Green Team earlier today. Um, energy code adoption, which will require EV charging, EV ready and EV capable and multiple types of new developments. And some projects that are pending grant funding, like an off-grid solar-powered EV charger for Pioneer Park, that will also have outlets to charge electric wheelchairs and other e-mobility um, ways of getting around. Um, picture here is of the city's uh, first Nissan Leaf, we have two now, um, which was shown at the EV Car Show at Harbor Days last year. Water and, and I forgot, I was going to mention something on that last one. Um, something that I can invite the council to participate in that um, is around transportation. From October second to eighth, uh, there's disability rights. Washington is having a week without driving challenge. And I would encourage the council, I can send information if you'd like um, to experience a week without driving, that's using transit, not driving a car and experiencing what it's like for folks that don't have the ability to have a personal vehicle uh, for any reason, income disability. I think that it, it ties in really well with my definition of climate work and climate justice and that uh, we have to advance the well-being of all with that work. Um, so I, that's an action that you all can take if you would like, and I can share more information about uh, week without driving. Okay, back to waste and water. Um, some of those strategies in the TCMP uh, include increasing the efficiency of water and wastewater infrastructure, reducing water consumption, diverting solid waste from landfills and reducing consumption of carbon-intensive goods and services. Um, I hope that you all have noticed the green buckets floating around all city facilities at this point. Uh, these are the compost buckets that we sprinkled around uh, in April, uh, where we started uh, collecting compost in city operations. Uh, some of the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four work related to the sector is our investment grade audit at city facilities, which includes a water audit. Uh, composting at city events wherever feasible. You might recognize someone in this photo. Uh, composting at city facilities and the continued implementation of our compost procurement ordinance that you all passed in January. This picture is from Falls Fest last year, which was our first event. Um, diverting compost and recycling at a city event, and we're going to be back next year, which is this year, actually, in a few weeks. Um, so if anyone wants to volunteer to help sort waste, um, I'm still accepting volunteers as well. The agriculture, forest and prairie sector, you also might recognize someone in this photo. Um, the strategies in the TCMP include reducing emission.
Alyssa, your mic was off for a minute.
Oh, is it back?
Yes, it is.
Okay, my apologies. Some of those strategies in the TCMP related to agriculture and forests uh, include agricultural practices that sequester carbon, preserving tree canopy and managing forests and prairies to sequester carbon. This is a picture. This is a picture from Arbor Day Earth Day this year where we planted a tree. This year and next year, we're working on updating those three different sections of code as it relates to trees. As you know, they're kind of in a limbo state because of the wild and urban interface. Brad is the project manager for those, and he would be the best person to ask questions about that. But we're also kicking off tomorrow an inventory of every tree and city properties and coming up with a maintenance plan and budget as per our urban forestry management plan. We got a grant to do this work, and we're also continuing work on the Habitat Conservation Plan and Program. Picture here is a screenshot of the city's interactive heritage tree map, and I can send a link out to this if you'd like, but every time we have a new heritage tree approved by a city council, we add its story and a place where you can click on the map and see pictures, and our tree board takes pictures. They're working probably on getting some ones with more leaves before fall sets in of some of these other trees. The last sector in the TCMP is crosscutting, so those things that don't fit in one bucket or transcend a grouping, these are mostly focused on advocacy with the general public and with legislature. The photo here is of at the Thurston Green Business Awards in which we organized with TCAT's EV Group, a small EV car show at the event, which I think really added something. We're invited back next year for the EV Car Show. Some of the work in 2023 and 2024 for crosscutting includes the city's sustainability webpage, which we're working on improving and increasing the information available. You can see here, we have a new all-electric buildings page, a solar in Tumwater. There's a page for all-electric incentives, helping people connect with the IRA incentives as well as PSC incentives. We, I've had an intern for the past three quarters from Evergreen at one point, four interns at a time. So we're working closely with Evergreen and we will be working with SPSCC when we move there. Guest lectures and through our city legislative agenda are other ways in which we're approaching the crosscutting work in this year. So I already talked about what the picture is, it's our sustainability webpage. With that, the same picture for questions, and I'll stop sharing my screen and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? One thing I might make mention of, and you might find this interesting. I'm on Intercity Transport Authority Board, and we did a seven-hour workshop on infrastructure for how we do electric vehicle or hydrogen fuel cell and what it is going to take to do the whole bus fleet to do that. And if you want to make your brain explode after seven hours of going into extremely technical things, that was very enlightening, but the bottom line is none of this is cheap. Is this going to be, the bottom line came out to $400 million just in infrastructure over a ten-year period. So those kinds of things are very, very expensive. And so as we get grants and those kinds of things, all of this obviously is not going to happen overnight because it just takes a while for infrastructure and funding. So I just wanted to make that point.
I, at my last job, we were transitioning our mini-bus fleet to electric, and I was part of those conversations. And yes, the getting a bus system to electric is incredibly expensive, especially when you have hurricanes and you need a generator that's the size of multiple rooms. So I, yeah, I understand.
I'll go to Councilmember Swarthouse and then Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to applaud Alyssa. It's just, it's so wonderful working with her and especially serving on the climate mitigation. Just night and day difference with everyone having their own staff members and just how bright and energetic these people are. And just really appreciate helping take something that's just such a huge issue with and just make it manageable and so that we're, you know, showing that we are making some progress in some areas and that we do have a plan, that there is a plan in place. And then we will be seeing the ILA will be on our consideration schedule that she was referring to, the interlocal agreement will be on our September nineteenth meeting, too. So we'll be discussing that and then approving that.
Thank you, Councilmember Kathy. And then I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. I agree with Councilmember Swarthouse. These things have been for years on paper, and you've brought them to life and, you know, put. I mean, some of these are long timelines, but we can see, we can see where we're going and what, so I really appreciate that a lot. I wanted to ask, like, under the heading that you had, I think it was transportation and land use. Is that really pretty much just all transportation? And you're talking about how the transportation impacts the land use? I mean, I missed the land use kind of part.
Yeah, it is not just that. I flip in the plan right here and I can rattle off some of those. So dense development, twenty-minute neighborhoods, ADUs, those are some of the. My paper plan is not in order. There are many land use actions. I think there's two strategies related to land use and then probably five or six actions underneath each of those. What I had to report for what was on people's work plans this this year and next year did trend heavily with transportation. But we had, because a lot of Brad's work also works on agriculture and prairies with the the gopher work and whatnot. There, the comp plan, that's not something that's in the TCMP, but is something that we will be incorporating climate in. So the jurisdiction work program for us is what strategies of the plan are explicitly being done by this. It's not to say that certain things aren't, like if it's a Venn diagram, that's everything in the middle and that there's not things going on the sides that are also climate actions. Does that answer the question?
And the other thing that I wanted to ask was, it seems like in the past and still when you get reports on climate, climate action, climate things, it's, it seems to be heavily about emissions. Is that just something we defaulted to and we didn't have someone to help us like you? Or is that what the team has worked on or?
I think that there's many different ways of thinking about climate change, and a very common one for cities is treating it as a math problem of emissions in, emissions out. I like to look at it more holistically, but the measurement that I am held to by especially members of the community who like to remind me how we're not on target for those goals is the emissions. That's something that's more tangible that I can produce a report about every year. I can share stories of how our work is helping or hurting folks and how we don't want to hurt folks. But that's not as easy to compare year over year with the tools that I have at hand. So it's more than that, but it often gets dwindled down to just looking at carbon emissions, even though that's certainly not the whole picture at all.
Yeah, I think you inherited that because that's what they mainly talked about because they didn't either want to or know how or get into some of the other things. And I think emissions is tied closely to all of the things that have to do with the trees and all of the agricultural kinds of things and the, it's not just people impacted by emissions, but it is in the long run, us, but anyway. And wondered if you knew anything about the answer to how long the tree ordinance might be on hold.
I am not the project manager for that. Mike here might know more than I. But I'm not sure.
Hi, Mike. Didn't get to talk to you enough just tonight.
Yeah. The short answer is we're not certain. We're still trying to figure out the wildland urban interface code work. And in fact, we have a couple of meetings on that topic tomorrow, I believe. So we're still, and one of those is with the RAWC person who lobbies on city's behalf at the legislature. So we're still kind of trying to figure out what to do with that. So I don't have a firm timeframe, and we'll pick that back up again, unfortunately.
So is there not some things in the in the tree ordinance and the, you know, overstory and understory pieces of it still could be moving forward? I mean, I'm nervous about putting the whole thing on on hold.
Yeah, I think. You know, given our understanding of the wildland urban interface code as it as it's drafted right now and it hasn't been adopted yet, it's kind of difficult for me to imagine how we would kind of piecemeal that out and adopt pieces of it. I mean, it may come to that, but for now, I think my recommendation would be is we see where we are with this and see what we do after this gets kind of sorted out more more completely.
So we're not making any decisions in that area or that arena?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said, so we're not making any changes or decisions in that area or that arena of of our, or deserve anything?
You mean in the tree regulatory adoption?
Right.
No, we, we've, we've put it on hold, we haven't made any changes to it. A lot of it is drafted and has been reviewed, and we're just, we haven't lost sight of it. It's still on our work program, we're still working diligently on wildland urban interface code, understanding that better and see where we go from here. So it's not like it's fallen off the radar and we're not doing it. We're just, we need to get that sorted out a little bit more before I think I know how we should go forward.
Do we have people lobbying for us on this?
Yeah, that's, that's part of what we're doing, absolutely. And part of the meeting we're having tomorrow with the AWC representative is is making a lot of this, I think part of my own take on this is there's a lot of concern about the new energy code that's going to be adopted. And I think the wildland urban interface code kind of flew under the radar for a lot of jurisdictions. We found a lot of jurisdictions that are actually affected by it, and they know less about it than we know. So we've kind of been focused on this, I think, because we were working on the the, all the regulatory documents for the urban forestry management plan. So I think to a certain extent, we're, we're trying to help other jurisdictions kind of catch up to where we are in our understanding.
It sure seems like the folks who designed that code doesn't know much about climate change. And it's just, it's one of the most ridiculous things I've ever seen.
They were, yeah, they were, they were responding to a legislative mandate to deal with wildfire risk. And so I think they're, they're well-intentioned. I think that you're right, it does have a lot of unintended consequences.
Well, do you start with wildfires in the middle of a city? I mean, you know, it's kind of like crazy, it's kind of like crazy. Anyway, well, thanks.
One of our concerns is the mapping is not at all granular. And I think that's one of the things we're trying to work through is trying to improve that mapping because the mapping, as we look at it, doesn't make a lot of sense. And to a certain extent, I agree with you, but I'm also thinking about the Sumner Grade Fire near where I grew up in Sumner. And that came very close to coming into the city of Sumner, and it was, it was a pretty, pretty devastating fire. They were, they were surrounding houses, the firefighters trying to save individual houses, and they're afraid it's going to jump the Puyallup River. So things have changed and we do need to be aware of that as well.
Mike, that's out in the toots.
Sumner?
In the city here, boy, you know?
Sumner's a city, too.
Thanks, Mike, for that. Appreciate it. Thanks for jumping in and updating on something that's not your thing, but you knew a lot. I like it.
So go to Councilmember Jefferson, then Councilmember Dahlhoff, and then Councilmember Althausen.
No, just a thank you to Alyssa. Alyssa, I appreciate how you make this exciting, easily digestible and meaningful. So I have a question for you. What brings you the most joy when doing this job?
That's a great question, being able to do it. Growing up, my mother was a a special ed teacher and an environmental activist. My dad was a public school science teacher, and I never knew growing up that this was a job that I could have. So the fact that I get to do this and that I get to work on something that I'm very passionate about and would probably go crazy if I didn't have forty hours a week dedicated to it. I'm just glad that I get to at least feel like I'm making a difference every day, even if it's a small point-one metric ton with lots of effort or not. I'm just happy to be able to do the work. It's a dire time and we need people doing it, and I'm happy that I have the opportunity to.
It's good to hear that. Thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Alyssa, one thing I wanted to ask is I know on the website, there is an example of a dashboard, right? The solar dashboard, which I love and I dig. And I'm wondering if there is talk or discussion about when we're looking at your summary table of tracking everything, right? All those elements, how to present that for tracking, not just for council, but for staff and for the community, so that we can see the data-driven decisions? And so is there an opportunity to have additional dashboards to reflect the different sectors?
I think there is. The frequency at which I would be able to get that data is limited. So like getting electricity data, it takes a while to get that. And then to move that into translating it into greenhouse gas emissions. So I could put the permit data I pull, it takes five minutes for the solar dashboard. I pull that on a monthly basis. I could do that easily for the utilization of our EV chargers. Things that are easier to pull data from, I can do more frequently. Things that are more complicated or require third parties to provide me that data a little less, it's not going to change, the dashboard's not going to change that frequently. TRPC does and formally will have had, but will no longer have a climate dashboard as part of the climate work. They will have some things on their data page that are related to climate change. But in a lot of these cases, the data that we can show on a exciting enough basis for us to show change in a dashboard setting as opposed to a stable document, it's hard to get that to make it exciting, but I could try. Also, having a dashboard and having it be only numbers, generally, it does make it hard to tell the story of the more qualitative aspects of the co-benefits of the work, unless there was like videos that we could produce to put in there, but that would also take a good bit of time and willing participants, but I'm interested in showing.
Thank you for considering. I just, because I know that just, I'm a left-brain, right, background in this. So having that is able to, like, how do I eat an elephant one by at a time? So those digestible components helps us tell the story as well and show why we're dedicating money, right? It shows our priorities. So just, I think it's all tied in. So I would love to see more of that concept, if applicable and realistic and feasible. Thank you.
Councilmember Althausen?
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify. So is, is the like preservation of gopher habitat and things like that, is, does that count as a climate reduction strategy?
The preservation of prairie?
Yeah.
Does. It is in agriculture, prairies, agriculture's prairies and forest sector.
Okay.
That is considerable. So that's why it was included in the the budget for it was included in that $26 million total, too.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Great. Well, thanks so much, Alyssa. I really appreciate it. Great information. And I think this is very helpful to everyone, why we spend so much time and resources doing this. It's really important. All right, so Mayor, city administrative report. So administer your parts. Do you want to go first?
Sure, I'll keep it pretty short. I would let the council know that at your September nineteenth meeting, we're going to have an employment agreement for you to review and ratify for the Administrative Services Director position. So we went through an application and selection process. We had interviews, I believe it was last week or the week before, with three different panels and had three great candidates and was able to make an offer and and come to an agreement. I'm not at liberty to say currently who that specific person is, other than she's eminently qualified. And I think the, all of the panel's members were, would concur that she was a great, a great option for us. So I'm excited for that to come before you next Monday. And other than that, I did a fire department ride-along last Friday, had a great time for the first four hours of my day and really appreciate the opportunity to learn a lot and ask a lot of questions and learned very quickly that the word quiet is considered a dirty word. And learned very quickly that the word quiet is considered a dirty word and you are not to say it. Because as soon as you say it, it's no longer quiet. It's a, it jinxes the situation. So, but it worked because I didn't get to go on a ride along. I, in fact, I was watching the active alert. I don't think they had it call until very late in the afternoon that day. So I brought him a little bit of good juju for a while anyway. So very appreciative to Brian and his staff for the ability to, to participate in that. And that's it for tonight.
Great. Thank you. So I don't have very many items other than I'm doing several meetings this week. So other than that, I really don't have anything to report other than going to lots of different things like chamber meetings and and senior, senior luncheons and mayor forums. And so, yeah, so that was just keeping busy there. So all right, with that, we are just a little shy of two hours. So with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting for this evening and we'll see everyone next week. Good night.